Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Placko, if you can call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
Everyone could rise for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all the students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public-community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting and a public participation section on the agenda. First up are the -- this is the approval of the July 30th, 2019 Board Minutes. I make a motion to approve. I can have a second, please.
I'll second.
Ms. Grassi, is there any discussion? Ms. Matt Coldwell, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Motion carried. And it takes us to Special Reports.
Okay, I'm gonna kick off Special Reports tonight. We have Barb Del Rosso here from the Ohio Schools Council, and she's gonna come present to the Board of why she's here and kind of explain what's going on.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting me attend. I am Barb Del Rosso from the Ohio Schools Council. I'm the utility manager there. And on behalf of First Energy and the Ohio Schools Council, we would like to present to the district a check of $6,000 for participating in the First Energy rebate program, which was for some Chromebooks that were just recently purchased.
Yeah, over the summer, we made our purchase of about 1,200 Chromebooks, and we were able to receive a rebate, I think it was $5 per device.
$5 per.
On those Chromebooks, through going through the program and providing receipts and proof of purchase and things like that.
Right.
And able to get that approved and--
Right, with Gary's help and some paperwork, we were able to file this for him. So, we're happy to present this for you, and we're happy OSC can serve with some of the services we provide like this.
Why don't you come up and give us a photo of top of here?
Gary wanted the giant one, but--
[laughing]
She said we would've got 12,000.
[laughing] Okay, thank you.
And you.
Great, congratulations. [applause]
I did want to point out there are additional rebates available that we're working on. You can go back historically to projects we've done, and also with the new construction, we're also working through that because there's some rebates available. Just one of the issues that we run into is Riverside is it has to be First Energy, so the campus and Riverview are actually sitting angle power, but our other buildings that are First Energy, there's rebates available for things that we're doing now. So Parkside, we'll be able to rebate through that, you know, and we kind of work through those challenges. We have a lot of utility providers to run this one.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to the Ohio Schools Council. You guys do a really great job providing benefits to districts.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You guys are awesome, and we do enjoy that.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
And good night.
I want to introduce a very, very close friend of mine. I see him every day. We talk several times during the day. He's been a little bit crabby, I think, the last couple days. But you know what? He got us, and he will have these schools open, and he got our certificate of occupancy, so--
But those come Friday.
Yeah. But--
All right.
Woo! Again, I have to tell you, we've all been -- the central office has been over to the sites several times, last week, this week, every day, a couple times a day, even in board-- and board members. I'm telling you, even being away from the building for a couple hours, you come back, something else is completed. Now, I do have in my presentation some pictures from Parkside and also Riverview. Parkside's in a little bit better shape, I think, in terms of completion, at least from an abase eye, and Riverview is on its way. I know you've got some extra help over there as well.
Yeah, to get stuff out of it.
Get stuff out of there. But it looks like we're taking this collective deep breath here that we will be ready by September 3rd. The other thing I also want to mention is even though it's last minute, and we're probably gonna take some criticism over it, but we were not able to get people in for any type of student acclamation program. So, we're going to do that during the evening of Labor Day. The day before, it's not a general open house for the general public, we're gonna have that later, but it will be for students and their parents. If they can keep siblings home, that would be great, because we don't have parking for everybody. We're also even gonna suggest for those people that are gonna come to carpool and possibly even at Parkside, use the new path if they're living in the summer when the weather's good. I'll get to that and after Chris, during my report. Chris will give you the monthly update now.
Parkside, like Jim said, it's a little bit ahead. We have a -- we're finishing up case work at Madison. That will be done the next day or so. Doesn't look like it's gonna be again. Flooring is done, just doing some base odds and ends, painting, touch-up, furniture's in the buildings. It's being moved where it has to go. Final cleaners are in the buildings. Parking lots are paved. It's all done at Parkside, Madison, or Riverview is done, what was intended, plus some more. We're ready to get you the bus moving, which is tremendous, to get the buses off the street and turn around. And the district moving in, and I think they're still moving into Parkside right now, and that is tomorrow morning. We'll have lots of people, we'll talk to each other, everything went well today, and I anticipate that tomorrow also. We got all of our inspections. We're just waiting for the county on one last one at Madison, or keep going back to Madison, Riverview. We should have that tomorrow. It's a temporary grading. County is, for their words, they are preparing the temporary occupancy certificates so they can be hand-delivered to us, and come out Friday for the final one.
That's awesome. So, will you be here next month?
I'm gonna be on a beach with my--
[laughing]
So, the real question is-- Yes, I will be. The real question is, are you gonna miss me asking you, "What keeps you up at night?" I don't sleep right now, so--
Everything and anything, right?
We got a good three-day push. We're gonna do something this Saturday, just to get as much-- we're gonna have some on weekends to finish flooring, but nothing we can't finish after hours.
I was gonna ask how it works. Any kind of thing you have to do in the session that is after the kids are out?
Yeah, and I mean, if there's something the district is okay with, you know, the guy's working in the back of the closet or--
Right.
Yeah, but other than that, it'll be out there. We'll be working on landscaping in the Parkside. Preferably, we could do that, you know, off during the day, planting all the trees.
Okay.
That's all that.
When does grass and all that go in?
That's where we're gonna be working.
Okay. Grass and all?
That was kind of not the priority.
Well, yeah, obviously.
For that, but that's where we'll be going to start the carpeting.
Great.
I want to get a quick update on the flashers, too.
Yeah, I made a phone call for Parkside. They did say that it is ordered. If it is not in on the time for September 3rd, they know that's our start date, they will have something temporary in place, so everybody's aware where the schools--
The schools are?
Where our zones are.
The other thing, too, is I was talking to our new SRO, Chris Hasrela, and they're gonna try to get somebody out to direct traffic at both sites for the first few days, so everyone knows where they're going. Again, Madison Avenue is not complete from the front yet. We do have a large loop, but remember, the way the parking lot was designed, one loop was for our buses, and the other loop was for drop-off, so now we're gonna be sharing this loop. We have, what, 12 buses that are gonna be over there? So, it's gonna get a little tight, but it is what it is. We never said that the parking lot was going to be done by the start of the school year, because we had a building sitting on it. But, and we were supposed to have the loop done, and they did put in the loop for us, which I--
But we're really pushing that. The schedule is to get that to you in October. We're really pushing to get it sooner than that. And out there, we have all the site lighting up out there. You see that's all getting graded out there now. We're gonna get that to you once.
Do we anticipate a lot of-- I guess we can't really even predict, but do you think a lot of people, parents, will drive their kids to school on the first day?
We typically do, yes.
You know, I mean, considering they're new schools, like, take the bus would probably be a great suggestion, because--
This is St. Jantry did send out a notice to Riverview parents--
Take the bus.
Basically encouraging for the first couple weeks to take the bus to the parking to the traffic insurance, and that you would send it out dated, you know, when it's kind of cleared out.
Okay.
Any questions for Chris?
We appreciate you.
Thanks, Chris.
That's good stuff.
Looking good over there.
Thank you.
Anything else for Special Reports?
I don't think we have any more.
Nope, okay. It takes us to--
Are you gonna be there first, then? Chris, thank you very much. Thanks, Chris.
Am I gonna miss it for a while?
Thank you. All right, that takes us to Old Business, if anybody has anything.
So, I just, I do have a question that's been been around a little bit. And so, I know from buildings and grounds that we're still working through the process of the banned situation during the game. Were you gonna mention that later, or?
No, I can.
Yep.
Yeah, it's been delayed, and I've been in contact with CQ Consultants over it. I think it was the foundation company that was really slow on giving us back contracts. So, at this point, when we thought we would have it done by about the middle of the season, it looks like it's gonna be closer to the end of the season. I have spoken to Mr. Schwartz about it, and, you know, he's, well, I think he's a little disappointed, but not to the point where, you know, he'd rather have the banned stands and have it done right. So, we were talking about maybe putting them in the stands. He really doesn't like being up there, because it's very confining, and he can't get out of the, like, the same thing that we talked about a few years.
Sure.
So, we put the option out there of possibly running chairs, and maybe putting them in the D-section, maybe getting 200 chairs, like, you know, just running them and putting them down there for home games, and it'll do until it is uncomplete.
If they were, excuse me, if they were to go in stands, what section?
It would be the far closest to Route 84.
So, if you're looking at the stands to the far right?
Yeah, if you're staring at those stands. It's tight.
Mr. Porch.
Like that picture up there, but it's tight.
Coach Porch, what's your input on where the ban is going to be? Have you had any insight, or?
Yes, they have--
No.
Yes, they have any discussion with them, but that's not really his real life.
I just made the observation, I think, long-term, the solution we have is gonna be fabulous, it's gonna be great. But, we just have to work through the issues to begin the season, and hopefully we'll be done by the end.
The parents are gonna see it, because there's gonna be some construction going on for the end of the season over there, too, so they're gonna see some progress.
What about the two rent bleachers?
Yeah, we don't, we didn't wanna, it's gonna be cheaper for us to rent chairs than it is bleachers. The bleachers, we had four home games, and it was like seven grand. That was two years ago, and then we had six home games, and it turned out to be around 10 grand. And we don't wanna spend another 10 grand on getting bleachers. That weren't even in great shape either.
No, they were scary watching them.
Yeah, I would rather have them have the chairs, and they can arrange them any which way they want. I am gonna ask that they go at the, close down to the stadium, so they're not in the way of anyone that stands by the fence and watches Riverside, or be sharing--
Well, enough to mention that if we wanted--
Actually, it's a year-long system.
If we wanted to rent, you would've had to have done a long time ago for availability.
Yeah, we haven't even called to see if they're available, but yes, they were putting pressure on us in the spring to commit to it, and we said no. So, we didn't even call. They might be available, but we're not interested in spending another 10 grand, so we've already spent some money on our base project, and we'll be completed by the end of the season. At least that's what they're telling me, the end of the season, late October, at the end of the year.
I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. Thank you.
Anything else for Old Business? All right, that takes us to New Business, if anyone's got anything. Nothing for that. That takes us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. The first thing is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. We have not met since the end of last year, but I imagine as the school year gets going, we'll get started on that again. Next is Curriculum and Programming. Mr. Miley and Boosters.
Okay. Curriculum and Programming, August 8th, we had a meeting, and we discussing ACT and SAT considerations for the upcoming school year. We also discussed some new tech programming at the elementaries through eighth grade, and that's well in, well in progress. We-- trying to see what this other thing is here. Talked about the Guidance Department and some of the things that we'd like to see going on in that department. So, it was a good meeting for that nice summer day. And we also, with regards to the Boosters, we haven't had a meeting, but we do have our agendas for meetings for the year. Calendar's set, and Easter egg hunt is set, so things are moving along that way, too.
Awesome. As you see on Facebook, the Parkside and Riverview definitely have pages up and going.
Yes.
And they had a lot of information with their families, so that's exciting.
I was trying to--
Good work. All right.
It's a big thing for me.
Okay, that takes us next to Finance and Audit Personnel Strategic Plan. Mrs. Grassi.
We haven't had a meeting in the Finance and Audit and Personnel Committee, but we'll probably be having a Personnel Committee soon. We'll have to convene, because we've got employee handbooks that we wanna work on and update, those additional employee handbooks that we have, so I have nothing else to report on those.
All right. Buildings and Grounds Operations Alumni, Mr. Heck.
All right, so with Alumni, unfortunately, I was out of town during the last meeting, so I don't, was not able to attend, but I do know this is a plug, that we are looking, I believe, on September 13th, is that correct, to, to inaugurate the Veterans Memorial?
Yes.
So, that would be before the home game at 6 o'clock, and set the stadium, correct? If you wanna--
Yeah, this is correct.
Yeah, okay, terrific. So, just to be more concise, we will be dedicating the Riverside-- boy, I'm tough guy.
Veterans Memorial.
Veterans Memorial, thank you. Veterans Memorial at 6:00 PM on September 13th, which is the Friday before the home game, and so, it'd be great if people were able to participate in that.
Can I ask a question on that? Will the bricks be in? Like, all the engraved bricks that people have purchased?
I believe so, yeah. I think we're working on them this week.
Yeah, I mean, last time I was over, the fence is open, it's squared off, and they have the flagpole bases put in, and all that's there right now, so they have some work to do.
Yeah, they're supposed to be working on it this week.
Thank you.
All right. And then, as far as buildings and grounds go, you heard the big news, that we are on course in speed to get the certificate of occupancy and start school on the 13th, or, excuse me, on the 3rd. On the 3rd. And then, we had quite a number of projects that were going on over the summer. Mr. Weiner had coordinated with the, with that workforce, the summer workforce, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Dan.
Summer workforce, they're amazing. I can't thank the board enough for allowing us to hire them. No issues, we got so much more done this year. The longer summer that we did have helped us get through some additional work that we had planned. LaMouth paving, we did finish that with the outside company. We also had skirting around the trailers at Melridge that was on our list to get completed, and that is now finished. We had the football field cleaned on Wednesday after the water damage, the company from Field Turf came out, and that was a success, and no issues from that water, which was a concern of mine, but again, panicking. Hale Road, we cleared along the culvert. We finished that project with three, four of the maintenance people, and then it's completely cleared out. All the water is running the way that it's supposed to be running. Basically, everything that we had talked about on our list of projects was completed. The schools are cleaned, we're ready to go. This evening, we are at Parkside. As I speak, they're finishing up the last of the truckloads from 6:00 this morning. We've had a number of custodians in, running three trucks. Tomorrow morning at 5:30, then we'll start working on filling up Riverview with all the teachers' belongings from the trailers, and currently working on a quote for the plowing project. So, that's kind of where we are.
And on top of all that, you sealed the parking lot here at Riverside and restripped it, so--
Restripped.
Yeah.
And it didn't have to happen late in August when the band people were coming through yelling. So, pretty happy about all that. And everything else is up and running. Athletic fours ready, volleyball, football, everybody's in full swing, and so far, so good.
You had a lot of extra work on your plate this summer, moving, moving things out, moving things in, and I suppose you've done a great job.
Well, we had great, great staff, great cooperation from all the administrators. Not me, I just walk around with clipboard checking it off, so--
Oh, you did it well. Good leadership.
Yeah, thank you. And we have a great football team as one and all.
Yes, they are. They looked great last year. They did.
Terrific. All right. Thank you.
He's good stuff.
Good job.
All right, excellent. That takes us to Policy and Legislative. Mr. Jeffries.
Legislative, the only thing I have under there is Senate Bill 134, which is, talks about school bus safety. They're just trying to increase the penalties for violators, for school bus violations. That's all I have under there, and nothing on policies.
Okay. It takes us to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Galis.
Thank you.
Dr. Galis, I'm sorry.
You know, it's kind of interesting, too. I've been reading this big discussion going on about whether or not, in Ohio, they should require you to have a front license plate. And I didn't really think of, well, what's the big deal? And now, people are saying that it'd be a lot better having it in the front for those cameras that we're putting on the bus.
So, I got the one in the bag, catch you coming and going?
Both, yeah, either way, huh? Yeah, because if they're out of state, right? I think Ohio's one of the only cities that have license plates.
Well, I think Ohio disapproved in the first--
End of June.
Yep. For those guys with B and D.
Oh, here it goes.
Actually, I did, I have the mouse over there.
Oh, do you? All right, so, I'm not gonna read all of this. I asked Lee over at Parkside if he could give us a list of all the things that they accomplished last week, because they were working feverishly over there, and I have to say that I was pretty impressed. We go to the site maybe two weeks ago, and we're really getting, we were really getting nervous the other night.
And Lee is from?
On Parkside.
Icon. He's working for Icon. He's the project superintendent.
So, you can see on the left all the things that they were able to do, and they have been working very, very hard to get things done. They know we're down on a crunch. Goals for the week include getting the occupancy permits and everything else. Right now, we have a temporary one where we can get people in there, move things in, and by Friday, we're hoping to have the real deal, so-- That's the office area in Parkside. I apologize, it's kind of hard to see where I sit. As you can see, a lot of it is already done. You have the Level 3 ballistic glass, you have the transaction drawer, everything is starting to take shape. You're gonna see a lot of these pitches look like it's complete, but there's a lot of debris and everything else. The cleaners have not been through the site yet. Bathroom stall doors up, I guess you can't get an occupancy permit unless they're up. This is in the bathroom, I believe, off of the main hallway. That's the hallway looking from the pod area. They still need to put in, put up some of the panels on the sides. One of the questions was, why don't we have any stripes or anything else on the side? Maybe even more visual, it's better, we're better looking. And there's these soft panels that they put on. This is a learning studio. Again, it's complete, everything looks pretty nice, and the furniture's not, some of the furniture's already delivered, and some of it will wait in there. Some of the soft furniture, because of fabric issues with the company, will not arrive in school until middle of September. Just a typical classroom with puppies. This is the art room at Parkside. Fifth-grade learning studio. Again, it's complete, it's just, we need to get a lot of garbage out of, out of the school. Most likely, we're not going to be waxing floors yet until after we start. Our punch list is gonna be a little bit longer than anticipated, but at least we've got the kids in the building. We'll have the kids in the building. This is out looking out the window to the playground area. As you can see, they got the forest square, they got the fence up, they have the loop in, they have all the markings, everything is set. The far-left part of the picture there, we have the makeshift pathway, and in another picture, you're gonna see the actual pathway that was cut from the cul-de-sac to our property in the northwest corner. Again, that's just looking at the loop. That's the back's north side of the parking lot where parents and staff are going in. The south parking lot is gonna be for the buses. Now, this is off the cul-de-sac, was about seven houses, six, seven houses length. They cut the trail in, and what was interesting about is, when we went over there, they actually walked it for the first time. I saw a kid on a bike peeking out into our parking, you know, parking lot, and then when we started walking over, he screwed away and disappeared, so I don't know where he went.
Or jet house.
You can see his bike tire marks there. And that's it on our property, making a way for my property. That's leave there. I thought I'd take a picture of the guy, his dad's been working really hard, reminding his staff. A couple weeks ago, I did notice that he had a meeting out in the parking lot with everyone that was working there, to have a, another, just to motivate him a little bit more, and, you know, he had a school, I think a few people, but they were really, really getting after it over the last couple weeks. Riverview, just some of the things that they completed on the left, some things they wanna get done on the right. We are taking some of the crews from Parkside and taking them over to Riverview, because Riverview's a little bit behind than, compared to Parkside. At least the loop is in, that's coming off of Madison Avenue. It's rather a live loop. Putting the cement into the front of the school. Playground, almost looks like a poster. Really nice out back there. They're putting up the fence as of yesterday. Stands are in both gymnasiums. I just took a picture of Riverview, but same thing at Parkside. Learning studio, again, furniture is assembled, they're just getting cleaned up. That's the learning studio with fifth-grade class. Just down the hallway. That's Steve. What I'd like to do before we get to our enrollment is, we have time lapse of both buildings going up, and I'd like to show them to the Board, only take a couple of seconds.
Can you do that now?
Yeah, let's do it now. Let's do Parkside first. This is kind of the way they worked the last couple weeks, everything just-- It's really neat, you can see the veneer. Bye, bye, bye. Is that Riverview?
Oh, you can see where they've come down, too.
It's cool. Is that me?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's impressive.
These are projected numbers for the start of the school year. Again, I want you to understand that parents are more apt to make sure that they enroll their students properly before they take them out of the school, okay? With draw from the school. This is a little bit different than what we've had in the past. And part of it is because of efficiency. We don't have, you know, six elementary schools and classes with, you know, sometimes, you know, 14 or 15 students. Any one of these classes, you could easily break out and probably put another teacher in to bring the numbers down. But as you can see, everything that's highlighted, we're almost in the same boat, which would mean that we would, if we wanted to be even, you know, equal about this, that we would hire probably between nine and 12 teachers, which obviously is something we can't do right now. So what we're going to do is, we're going to wait to see how things settle out. And if the numbers get really large, we're going to have to reevaluate a few classrooms. If they stay around this, we'll probably keep the numbers like this and just move, you know, to start the school year. You know, one of the things I mentioned earlier is the fact that, when you look at projection numbers, I'm one of the, probably the biggest critics of the, when the OFCC comes around and they want to do enrollment projections. I've been here long enough to realize that it's not always that accurate. Now, the three that, or the four that we have up here, 2010, they projected that our enrollment would skyrocket. And when they did that projection, it was right about the time that we had the most students in our entire district. It was in 2010. And in 2011, I think we had the most elementary, if I'm not mistaken. When you go to the 2013 and 2016, projection enrollment, you're going to find that they're pretty accurate when you look at. 2019 and 2020, right here, being about 4,045. As you can see right now, with our draft, as of today, we got 4200, almost 4,300 students. Go to the next one, too. May of 6, 2016, same thing. If you look at 1920, you have about 4,200. So they're only about 100 off. But then, when you go to the latest one, you know, when you're closer to the projection, you should be more accurate, right? It's like a five-year forecast, right? The first couple of years are a lot more accurate than your last three years. If you look at here, 2019, 2020, they have us down for 4,000 students, where we're almost at 300 more. That's almost a whole class in the Riverside local school district. We did the math with what they thought we would have between K through 5 in May. K through 5, what we have here is 191 students. And again, my opinion is, things are getting better at Riverside. Some people that left back when are coming back. And I think with the new schools, it's been an attraction to a lot of those people. You know, we don't have those high paid participation fees. We got busing back. We've got nice schools coming online. And that's something we have to consider. Down the road, if we pass the second phase, we will be able to redistrict again and try to get people around. But under the circumstances, I think we did as best job as we possibly could in doing a reassignment or redistricting of our students with knowing what we knew at the time. But we'll keep an eye on it. Like I said, if we get, if we get some more kids and, a couple more kids in a, in a class of 27, 28, we will be probably talking to the board to see what we can do. But it is what it is. At this point, we're going to see how it goes and we'll keep an eye on the numbers as soon as the school year starts to give a more accurate report to the board in the end. One other thing here, up on the screen, what I mentioned earlier, we want to apologize, obviously, to the community, the buildings weren't ready, right? So we couldn't have any type of student acclamation program at all. But I know this is last minute, but we are going to send notice out to the parents that if they wish to bring up their students, their child, for all four elementary schools, because there was three districting, even though it's an old school, there are some kids that, that aren't, you know, maybe going from Haddon to Buckeye or Malrich, that might not know what it looks like there. So we're offering this open house just for the students and the parents. We, it's not a general open house for community to come in, we may have that later for the two new schools. But it will allow them to get acclimated the night before if they want to have them walk in. Again, we strongly encourage too, that if the parents can, to please, if they're eligible for transportation, please allow them to go on the bus. We will take care of them once they arrive at school. For Parkside and Riverview, we're breaking it down into what your last name starts with, only because we don't have, even build a huge parking lot to accommodate every single person that will use, catch a little time there. We're also encouraging carpooling. Only stay in an hour. You know, if your time is up, you know, just want to make room for the next group coming in. And if you live in the Parkside area, and it's a nice day, take advantage of the trail. It's really nice to walk over with your, with your child. And like I said, we'll have other open houses for the community when everything is done.
How will those be staffed?
We are asking teachers to come in for two hours and they will be paid their hourly rate, their negotiated hourly rate. And they don't have to, if they don't want to, but if they do, they'll get paid. It's a busy time for them too, it's 9:00, 4:00, starting, and they're trying to move into their buildings too. So, I think they're very excited, but there's also a level of anxiety too, because it's not like a typical start of the school year for anybody. Next, please, my report.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Placco, treasurer's report, please.
Okay. Earlier this month, on August 8th, I finished serving my term as president of the Northeast Chapter of Ohio Association of School Business Officials. And for my last event as president, I invited John Patterson, Representative John Patterson, to give an update to the treasurer of Northeast Ohio about House Bill 305, which is the fair school funding plan, which was the new proposed formula that didn't make it into current budget. Was introduced as a standalone bill, House Bill 305. And they tweaked some things in that formula. You know, this new formula is based on the actual cost to educate a child, where the previous formula that we're operating on now isn't even with the formulas, it's kind of a dollar amount picked out of thin air that doesn't have a method behind it. So the change from the original proposal that did not make it into state budgets, the standalone bill, is now looking at a six-year phasing of this new formula as opposed to a four-year phasing. And they're hoping to get that passed by the end of this calendar year, as Representative Patterson is term restricted at this point. So, one of his parting things he's hoping to done before he leaves is to get that implemented. The latest projections was if it was approved and implemented, it'd be about a 4.8% increase in state funding, which is about $284,000 for us, and an additional 3.7% increase the following year, about $231,000 on top of that $284,000. So we'll be watching that as, as this year progresses and we'll see what the future of that holds.
Does he plan on continuing his advocacy for financing for public education? Because he's been a really, really big asset and a great advocate for, for moving that process forward.
I'm sure, I'm sure he'll be assisting in certain ways.
Just curious.
Is he trying to get done calendar year 2019 or in this, this term?
Calendar year 2019.
He's done.
So, I think he's done at the end of this calendar year, if I understand.
I think he might have another year.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no representatives or senators up this, this four and a half.
It might be, yeah. But sooner than the next budget.
But he was, he was an educator and he's, again, a proponent of, you know, public school funding and he's been working really hard with, so it's, it just behooves him to stay involved, I think, to see this through.
Yeah. Just update on the construction, change orders. We had no change orders this month that were approved, so I don't have any update that changes from last month.
All right.
And then, a quick update on the county school financing, the levy rule is up on this November ballot. Next month, meeting will have a resolution on to change the distribution of funds for the removal of that levy. It'll clean up some language of our current allocation, which is based on enrollment, and then change allocation if the, you know, assuming the levy's renewed, that it'll be based on each district's valuation, which would result in an increase for Riverside and kind of reverse some of the, you know, since the last time it was renewed, the phased out of TPP funds and things like that, it's gotten a little skewed and balanced. And so that's going to correct that. And then the ESC is also compiling some information for all the districts that, on the facts of the levy and some of that information to put on our website. And, in the presentation I did back in March when we passed the first resolution to put the rule on, I will go through that again this October, just to kind of refresh everybody of what that is and update the figures to include this year 2019. And I believe, I just saw today that it's going to be issue three on this November ballot. I'll confirm for sure, but that's the paper I saw, it's going to be issue three. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Okay. We don't have.
I'd like to say something.
Oh, yes.
Yes, Mark Calcom, graduate of Riverside High School. Dr. Calis, I think that Haddon should be kept green. I think that property should go back to Angel Township. I think it would be an excellent gesture by the board members to deliver this to Angel Township and to have them do what they need to do with that property. A good part of that property is used for softball, bar, and it's been paid for many times over. And I think it's a good gesture by the school board to get it to Angel Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. If there's nothing else, it moves us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. The first one up is finance and audit. Let's see, we have a recommendation and a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer, items A through N. Have a second?
A second.
Thank you. I just want to mention the donations and thank the Gridiron Club for donating to the Veterans Memorial Project, and that was in addition to the agenda. Is there any other discussion on the items A through N? All right, well, if not, can you call the roll?
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Blenda Grassy.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. And then we have a motion to approve the athletic personnel items as listed in item K. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's no discussion on that. Can we call the roll, please?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Epstein.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Blenda Grassy.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to the Board of Education update. If anyone has anything.
I just would like to thank our administration for working extremely hard and our buildings and grounds, you know, for getting these schools open and it's just been an interesting process, but it's been fairly smooth, I think, relatively speaking.
Hard to believe that it started.
It is.
Four or five years ago.
And I would like to welcome the kids back to school and to new buildings. It's just really, really exciting, so.
First day of school, are you asking board members again to come greet people as they?
If you have the time, I could greet.
I'm not allowed to parkside, so I'm taking the park. What time does school open this year?
We have 8:00.
Elementarys?
Elementarys are 9:10.
9:10, that's 8:05.
Kids enter the building.
So, obviously, if there's one, it's a building, someone's going to have to go to the move, right? Someone's going to have to go to two of the buildings.
I go up to Malrich.
You said all the parksites, I'll walk, I'll walk there.
Okay.
I'll take Parkside.
Fuck you, you're driving across town.
I'll definitely walk there and not take this place.
I'll go wherever you want me to go. I'll be there later as well.
And Buckeye and Malrich.
I'll take Malrich and Buckeye.
You'll take both?
I'll go to both, you go to the new school.
I'm going in the afternoon, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, we've got kindergarten.
I'll go to wherever you want. I'm going to hit something neat.
I'll go wherever you want, just tell me.
No, I'm happy to. Well, Buckeye, no one's going to Buckeye right now, right? So you're Buckeye.
And then Blenda and I will be doing kindergarten orientation again and handing out the T-shirts and we'll get all the pictures. I assume, Nick, you're doing the, asking people to hashtag something for the first day of school pictures?
Yeah, we just posted something today about, send your photos to us and we'll post them online and school photos. It's become a very popular event.
It has. They need to send them to you, not just hashtags.
No, I can find, if they use the hashtag, I can find them.
What's the hashtag?
We represent.
Oh, okay.
Is the board getting a lot of feedback on how they, how the community likes push you back to start?
Oh, yes.
Oh, my gosh. Actually, I had a text earlier asking if this is going to be.
Get a regular occurrence.
I do, I'm hearing about it too.
Big fan. And then next.
Big fan.
Yeah.
And then next Friday is tailgate.
Work today. I just, I would like to.
You feel better than Thompson, don't you?
You know, if anybody who's been, you know, watching online or in the room consistently, a lot of dialogue with Chris Easley, who's done a great job with Icon, making sure that the buildings have, have, you know, coming online at the proper time on the 3rd, not 15th. But, but there's also been a lot of work done behind the scenes with Sir Calis, Dr. Calis, and Gary Placco and all the administrators. There's been a whole lot of work that has gone into allowing us to be on time. Dan has done a terrific job as well, kind of coordinating the opening. I mean, just, there's a lot of orchestration that's just not visible and not perceptible via the board meetings. And so, so really, it's a feather in everybody's cap that we're on the cusp of opening on time and working together as a great team and getting it to happen. So, my hat's off to everybody.
It's so exciting.
Thank you.
And then we do have our annual tailgate next Friday the 6th, which will be our first home opener for Friday Night Football. It's from 4:00 to 7:00. There's also a call that we're calling Passing the Pencil. Riverside Cheerleading is helping to fill Riverside Care Closet, Care's Closet, which is the, what?
We also have volunteer.
That's tomorrow.
Right, any of the teams tomorrow. Right, but we are accepting donations for Riverside Care's Closet from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. There'll be a Riverside van there that the cheerleaders will load, school supplies and personal care items and things like that to help children in the districts who may not have those things. And then, yes, meet the teams tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, in the stadium.
Volunteer's 5:00 to 6:00?
I said 6:00 to 7:00.
6:00 to 7:00 and then somewhere in between. Same spot behind the gift tree.
It's going to be a busy week and a half. Finally, that gets ready to go back. That might be ready. All right, with that said, we are going, we are not in need of the executive session tonight, so if there is anything, if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. If I get up a second, please.
Have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassy.
It's at 7:51.
Wow, this might be a world record.
It's crazy.
Still somewhere.
It is, this is weird, all right.
I don't know why we don't have a roll. Chip's going to have to. The good news is you're heading towards the move.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Da da.